I can just mention one or two agenda scheduling updates. We don't have any changes for this evening's agenda. A reminder that next Monday, the 22nd, we have a public hearing, two public hearings. The first one on the New Hampshire Gardens permit parking request and the second one on the proposed amendments to Article 7 of the Charter establishing residency requirement for the city manager and requiring council confirmation of the city manager's appointments of department heads. And we have additional special session items on those topics and the kind of the expanded topic of all of those things that have been talked about as a package, including the advice and consent role of the council on hires. So we have public hearings and that big topic that we've been discussing a number of times taking the bulk of next Monday's meeting. The following Monday, the 29th, we have tentative first reading ordinance on the permit parking area in New Hampshire Gardens and we have a scheduled first reading ordinance adjusting salary and compensation of the mayor and council members. Then, don't forget that the following, let's see, two Mondays later, November 12th, city offices are closed for Veterans Day holiday. And then, I think that's where I'll stop on upcoming agenda items. So we will now go to, let's see, I don't have anything for the record, so we will go to the public comment period. And this is the time when you can comment on anything that is not on our voting agenda this evening or is not the subject of a public hearing. So if you're here to talk about the salary adjustments and compensation for future councils, please hold your comments for the public hearing. And we do have a regular session and a consent agenda items. So I guess, since it's a consent agenda, if you have any comments on any of the consent agenda items or anything not on this evening's agenda, now would be the time to talk about it. If anybody wants to do that, come to the podium. I see Mr. Lovelace in the back.
Yep, my name is Pat Lovelace, your official P's delegate. Just wanted to let you know, want you people to know what the slogan for this upcoming month is. Remember November, everybody, remember November. Twenty-two more days and counting, T minus 22 days and counting before Election Day. And everybody, get out there and get their vote out if possible. You know, and tomorrow is the deadline to register to vote, October the 16th. One-sixth is the deadline. Tomorrow, you popped it, if you haven't registered, you've blown it for this presidential election. So please, get out there and register to vote if you have enough time. You might want to try to get up early in the morning and try and see if you can get out there if you can. May let the squeeze through. But I'm saying that it's only 22 more days before we decide who our next president's going to be and vote like your butts depend on it because you may not realize it, but they may. Your butts may depend on it because we want to have, what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see Obama in office and I'd like to see Congress step by and let him do his job. That's what I'd like to see us do. We got to really start thinking about who we want to have for our congressman, too, when that comes up. Because we got to realize that it's our Congress that can obstruct our president really bad. You can tie his hands up to nothing, tie it up in knots. So we got to realize that, that it's not just the president that makes the decision, it's also the Congress. And also, I'd like to ask about, never mind Congress for a minute, but how about that speed bump as you come in the door over here? As you're coming into the council chambers here, so there's a big high bump there and it makes my vertebrae rattle. You know, I just felt about three or four of my vertebrae rattle, you know, the bones in there. Because we go over that thing and it's awful high. Is there any way they can plane that down somehow? Or grind that down or come up there with an ax or an edge or something and just file it down? You've got to do something about that. That's going to, something's really going to hurt that day someday. You know, they've got to do something. Because that's really not wheelchair accessible, I don't think. It makes it half inaccessible. And also, community participation, I'd like to see a lot more of that going on, a lot more people coming to our meetings and taking part in our meetings, you know? And I'd like to see a lot more people coming out to hang out at the polls and learn about what's going on in their community. There's a lot more ways you can be community participation. And I think as part of Tacoma Park, activism means activism. We've got to be active in Tacoma Park. Show Tacoma Park how much we love it. If you love our city, come on out and show it. Yep, so come on out and vote on November the 6th. Twenty-two days and counting, T minus 22 days and counting. Come on, out and vote, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. And somebody will take a look at that bump.
Somebody will take a look at that big speed bump on that? Does it come in? I hope so, because that rattles my back something terrible. My bones don't like it.
Anybody else? Public comment. Come to the podium. And if you can identify yourself and keep your comments, three minutes, we'd appreciate it.
Hi, my name is William Coulter from Jefferson Avenue. Me and my neighbors are here to address our concerns about the redistricting and specifically how it affects Jefferson Avenue. I have three points to make, the first of which is that there is a very nice natural boundary called Sligo Creek and also one called, an unnatural boundary called Sligo Creek Parkway, which separate us from the proposed inclusion with Ward 5. But moreover, there's a large chasm there beyond the Sligo Creek Parkway and Sligo Creek, and that is the hospital and the college. There's a huge space there that is totally incongruous with where we are in our community, in our developed neighborhood. So I'd like you to consider that. I'd also like to mention that, you know, we are a tight neighborhood and we all, many of the people here are here because we're part of the SS Carroll Neighborhood Association. We wouldn't want that to be split up either. I'll speak for myself, actually. I wouldn't want that to be split up. But lastly, we just, I just voted for Kay Daniels-Cohen last year, you know? And I want an opportunity to vote for my ward chairperson so that I can be sure that my wishes are carried out on the council. And I'd also like to propose that we, I would like the opportunity to vote on the redistricting. I'd like to see it as a proposition on ballot and not just something that is being dictated by the council. So that's all I have to share on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ellen Durkey. I also live on Jefferson Avenue and I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I think that many of us are here to let you know that we are just a small number of people that, and many more on the Jefferson Avenue and Lincoln Avenue Carroll triangle there would like to be here tonight because it has generated quite a bit of angst and attention in our neighborhood, the proposed redistricting. And, you know, I agree with what Billy said. I think when you look at the map, you know, it might look like we're contiguous with the residential areas in Ward 5, but with the hospital and college there, there's actually quite a gap between any of the residences of where we live. I think people sort of natural area where they walk and the direction that they're spending time in the neighborhood is sort of that area between Maple and Carroll with the other streets that are now in different wards on the proposal, you know, such as Sherman and Grant and so on. And I guess I'd just like to add that I think this redistricting coming on the heels of closing down Ritchie to those of us who live within a half a block of Ritchie, you know, is kind of upsetting. It's sort of pushing us off and from a neighborhood that we thought we were a part of. And now we're not even allowed to drive on Ritchie from the direction that we're coming from. So in addition to redistricting, I would just like to ask the council to perhaps relook at that. I understand that the plan for putting in traffic calming is now going to be pushed back. So what was supposed to be a temporary measure is now looking very long term. So those are the two issues I wanted to share tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Susan Robb and I live on Manor Circle. And as near as I can tell, I would not be personally affected by the proposed plans, options for redistricting. But as a former co-chair of SS Carroll, I have some knowledge of how SS Carroll is operated in the past. And I see it as a neighborhood and I would not like to see that neighborhood association chipped away and broken up and rearranged by a redistricting plan. I will also note that the last time we drew, redrew the district lines, the Ward 2 now has a little finger into the middle of Manor Circle. And if you're familiar with Manor Circle, there's a circle that's called Manor Circle and it goes around. It comes in at one end of, off of Carroll and goes around and comes out at a block away on Carroll. And there is a unit or a block of condos in the center of the circle. That is in, the condos are in Ward 5. Consequently, if you live on Manor Circle on my side.
Ward 2.
I'm sorry, Ward 2. I misspoke. Ward 2. Thank you, Bruce. If you live on my side of the street, you're in Ward 3. And if you live in the condos, you're in Ward 2. And I think I saw some confusion in the last election where people thought they were in one ward or in another. And, I mean, that's an example of, that was really breaking up a neighborhood. You've got something right in the center of Manor Circle that belongs to another ward. So I would object to any of the plans that break up or chip away at SS Carroll. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sharon Milgram. I live on Lincoln Avenue. And I don't want to reiterate everything that was said, but I feel very much part of Ward 3 and would, don't see any obvious connection to the other areas. I see Kay out walking the dog and people in the neighborhood and we really do feel a part of Ward 3. Beyond that, I came on Ward 3 night to bring up the issue of the lack of safety crossing Carroll Avenue at Lincoln. And at that time, I was told, and there was broad agreement, that there needed to be a speed camera there and that there was going to be the placement of a speed camera and nothing has changed. Cars continue to speed down Carroll Avenue and I haven't seen the police there in a very, very long time. And I haven't seen a speed camera and I would appreciate an update. Thank you.
We'll get updated information, but.
Great. I mean, maybe I missed something, but I just would like an update.
The speed camera is due now.
It's the government. Everything's slow.
Well, slow is okay. I just wanted to know it's still coming.
That hasn't changed. It's still coming.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll get information on the timing on the speed camera and get that out to people.
All right. Just looking at this map.
Tell us who you are.
Steve Mackler, Ward 3, Lincoln Avenue. Just looking at this map, I agree with everything that was said before, but I have a question. Looking at this map, is there any reason, unless it's in the city constitution, why you cannot combine Ward 4 into 5 and have one less ward? I mean, it would seem to resolve a lot of issues. And if you look at the map, Ward 4 could just be combined, could join into Ward 5 and we have one less ward on the council, of course, after your tenure ends. But, I mean, you would incorporate everything and everybody's happy because there's a lot, just look at the map, it looks sensible to me. Just a question and a thought. But I agree with everything that was said because I really would like to stay in Ward 3 for all of the, for said reasons.
The districts are laid out based on population size. So if you were to combine those two, it'd give them double the population of any of the other wards, so we'd have to rearrange everybody again anyways, so.
So being that, being that the way it is, why can't you just take some of Ward 4? Or take some of Ward 2? Why do you have to take some of Ward 3? What's the rationale to taking from Ward 3? I mean, we have a very presidential thing, Lincoln, Jefferson, Sherman, we have a natural boundary, we have everything above, you know.
Richie never made it.
Sorry?
And Mr. Ritchie never made it.
But Jefferson did.
The six wards aren't part of city code.
Yeah. Let me just pause a second and then you can go ahead and we can continue, but I just want to make sure everybody understands that the redistricting proposals that have come to the council so far, there were options A and B. We've had some discussions with the redistricting committee. We had some ideas how they could change things. There's been a proposal that has come back as option C, but there was something left out of that. So when we discuss this tonight, we're discussing various options that the redistricting committee has brought to us, the supposedly improved version, and we will be continuing to work on it tonight and probably beyond tonight as we try and come up with the best solution. So it's still a work in progress. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that. Marie, if you want to talk.
Hi. Marie DeFesch. I live on Lincoln Avenue and I just wanted to comment on the traffic, the traffic, how we can now not make a right on Ritchie in the morning. And I had this idea a long time ago, but it was never, never accepted. I just thought that if we had a big sticker of a flower, or maybe even the City of Tacoma Park logo, that everybody that pays taxes in Tacoma Park gets a big sticker. And they put it in the back of their car and they get to use the streets in Tacoma Park that we pay taxes for. And if you get stopped by the police, you show your license. It shows you live where you say you live and they let you go. I proposed it before, but it was, it was too creative for the moment. And another thing is, you know, I think that we want to stay in Ward 4 or Ward 3. It's not, Jefferson and Lincoln is a very, you know, there's not a big population there. How many people are we? If it's to increase the Ward 5, maybe there would be a small apartment building that could switch position. That would not be so, maybe so involved in the community or not, you know, maybe the people wouldn't, they wouldn't care as much. So, just my thoughts.
My name is Merlin Kettering. I live on Lincoln Avenue, 207. In light of the desire to keep neighborhoods together and to flow with neighborhoods, I'd like to point out that when I walk, when I talk to neighbors, when I am in neighborhood, it is down Lincoln Avenue toward the other ward or it is over to Ward 3 where we now are. Both of those ways. We are completely engulfed off from that part of 5. So when we make neighborhoods, and we make a lot of neighborhood friends by actually walking, talking and greeting each other in the street, I just want to reemphasize that we should not be put across the gulf. I also would like to give support to Marie's idea that people who live in Tacoma Park should not be shut off from using the streets of Tacoma Park. And it really is a burden for us, just running over to Silver Spring, Safeway to Afterweight, make sure there's no traffic. And we are not on a heavy street with Ritchie. It's very low traffic. Thank you.
I know it's a thankless job, redistricting. However, option B, in all respects, seems to be not in keeping with keeping neighborhoods together. I am on, I'm Jacqueline Scheck and I'm on Sheridan Avenue, the mystery street, which by the way, appears to go all the way to Carroll on your maps. It does not. Stops at Opal Daniel Park, Hancock, my house, Short Street. In option B, we would be thrown over to District 4, Ward 4. We're a group of small houses. You'd also be dividing Sherman Avenue in half and poor Kay would be moving to a different ward, I guess it looks like. But we, Maple Avenue is a natural barrier. And so, again, just like these other folks have said, it would throw us into a ward with which we really have no neighbors. My house is at the end of Sheridan and there's a stand of trees between us and Maple Avenue. There's not even a road to go to Maple unless until you go around Sherman and so forth. So there isn't a walking, there isn't a sense of neighborhood with throwing us into Ward 4. The, and in all respects, I think option B is more divisive than it is unifying for, given where people are currently in comparison to the original boundary map. So I would suggest that at least option B is not in keeping with the stated objectives of the council, city council in considering neighborhoods. And I said, Sheridan doesn't go to Carroll, as many people seem to think. But, so I think breaking SS Carroll is probably a really bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just let folks know that at this point, the council isn't happy with any of these options either.
How about the sticker idea?
I'm Tracy Burke, 6 Jefferson Avenue. I manage our neighborhood email list. So I'm well acquainted with these folks and their phone numbers and cell numbers and emails. And when people move into our neighborhood, they're amazed at what a great place it is to be. And they say, you know, I bought this house and I really liked the house, but I had no idea that I would get neighbors like this. We feel a part of the geography of where we are. I personally, I don't know anybody on the other side of the hospital. We don't walk over there unless, you know, we're going on a really long dog walk. So I'm totally against this current proposition. And I'd also like to say, without disrespecting the effort that's already gone into this, we're not done. This is a math problem. This is demographics, this is population, this is all the things that go into the requirements that mandate this redistrict. So let's just keep trying. That's what I suggest. Don't rip up neighborhoods. We have our little enclaves and we belong there. In addition, I too, am really not happy about the Ritchie thing, that the signs run up on the exact same day that Hilltop closed us off as well. If I don't get out of my house by 6:25, I'm pretty cranky by the time I get over to McLean. And with that commute, that little hop up Ritchie, that's nothing. And I would happily have a flower power, big sticker on all my windows that allowed me to drive up that hill. Thank you.
I don't want to break up the neighborhood if there's anybody else who wants Tacoma. Okay.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunis and I'm president of the South of Sligo Citizens Association, a different neighborhood who's feeling a little bit pressured by these proposals here. I think that the, every one of the proposals does not honor our Citizens Association boundaries. I've heard a lot of concerns on our lists and personally, that every one of these options just cuts people off. And especially the folks on the other side of New Hampshire, I know that they already feel a little bit like they're a sore thumb at the edge of Tacoma Park, perhaps don't have as much police coverage. And I don't want to, anyone to feel like I'm abandoning them. I'm sure Tim doesn't feel that way either. And we sort of have wondered a little bit about what, you know, why, what motivated these things? I mean, has the Ward 6 council member developed a great affection of Sauciga that he wants to come and work with us?
Absolutely.
Or perhaps there's some competition for his next council seat that, you know, whatever. We don't know. But I strongly recommend that we consider the natural boundaries of Sligo Creek and find some other way to deal with things if we really must make changes. We, there was a lot of questions about what was the data used? Can we look at the data? Can we try to come up with some analysis ourselves? This is, we have a lot of good analysts in our group and I think we'd be happy to take a look at something if it would be, if that would be helpful to council. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the streetscape standards that you have on your agenda tonight, and Erkin has done a great job in working with the community on each of the issues dealing with the new Ave. So I just wanted to give a shout out for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot one comment. Is there still a chance that the hospital will stay or at least keep the heart, the heart center? Now that they're not allowed, they're not, they have not been given the green light to move.
Nothing has been decided yet.
Can the City of Tacoma Park welcome them with open arms and said, build whatever great hospital you want and stay here? Because as an aging population, I think we need to have a good heart center. The Silver Spring Hospital, the Holy Cross doesn't have one. So if any one of us ever has a heart attack, we have to go all the way, we would have to go to, I don't even know, to DC?
To Washington.
I mean, for a major problem.
We've been trying to work to make sure that there are important facilities left here. We're continuing to do that. We're working closely with the hospital now. We're meeting with them every month, trying to explore ways to make, make sure that we have adequate health care for our residents here, whether they move or whether they stay.
Because I have the feeling that when it all started, you know, a few people got upset about the traffic problems. And it seems like traffic is making so many decisions from people. But I see that it's a really big problem if the hospital moves. And can't we just say now, can't the city organize a fair and just invite everybody to persuade them to stay? Maybe another sticker would work.
Love it.
Thank you for your ideas.
I apologize. One more item, and it was not on the agenda. But Ward 2 night, we asked about 25 mile an hour speed limit signs. And I think that was well received, but I'm wondering if that is on track to have any implementation? And if so, can we get some feedback on that?
We will get you some feedback. I'm not sure if there's anything that's in the works.
I'm Una Kettering from 207 Lincoln Avenue Tacoma Park. And I'm here to support what was said before, but to also ask you to review the question of putting pedestrian crossing in Carroll and Lincoln. Because people get off the bus there and it's always like a chase between the buses, the cars and the pedestrians. So I think that's vital and I'm asking for that to be considered and really seriously looked into. And to support what has been said, because we would like to, as you say in here, to keep our neighborhood together. So I'm here to support that. Thank you.
And I'll just say, it's the desire of the council to keep neighborhoods together and to, to the extent necessary, split blocks to do it. So draw ward boundaries as they're currently drawn at the back properties, back property lines rather than down the middle of the street. So that, our intent is to keep working on this till we find a solution that keeps neighborhoods together.
Bruce, and if I could just add on the crosswalk. I believe we heard back from the state highway administration that they evaluated a crosswalk across Carroll at Lincoln. And their, the conclusion they relayed to us was that it was too close to the hill and the bend coming up for cars coming up the hill to safely see pedestrians in a potential crosswalk there. So, so the idea that we talked about with them was what about a crosswalk at Carroll and Boyd? That was their, that was their engineering analysis of stopping speeds for cars coming up the hill from the hospital.
Hi, I had one more comment on another subject. I don't get out much on Monday nights, so I figure I better get them in now. I'm William Coulter from Jefferson Avenue. A couple months ago, I guess, you heard from the co-op about their expansion plans. A couple months ago, I guess, you heard from the Co-op about their expansion plans. I would like to encourage the council to formally request of the Co-op a specific plan to build to the other side of their building, to the Sycamore side of the building. I think that's the east. I may be wrong about that. It was what was recommended in the Tacoma Junction Task Force Plan. And none of the plans that they presented to you that evening had, had that as an option. And I reached out to the Co-op, probably in July, I believe, and requested something from them. I'm a Co-op member. I'd like to see if that's plausible, because it, I think it, as the Junction, Junction Task Force really recommended, it's probably the best for that, that particular space. So, I was hoping that the council could make a formal request of them before anything else happens on that side. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Anything else? Okay. Thank you for all your comments this evening. And we will have a discussion later this evening on redistricting and we will let you know a status update on where we are after that discussion. Thanks for all your comments and on other topics as well.
And Ward 4 would love to have you in our ward.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thanks very much. We will move along to council comments. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. So, I want to recognize a number of people, individuals, and community organizations, starting with, I guess I beat some other council members too, the Tacoma Foundation. In regards to the Beer Fest this last Saturday, it was a great event, although I have an interest in there and thoroughly enjoyable and larger than ever before. The figures that I was hearing for the amount of money raised for distribution, that is, to community organizations through the Tacoma Foundation grant cycles were quite substantial, estimate somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000. So, thank you to the community members who attended that. I also want to express my thanks to three of my neighbors, Paula Walchuk, Chris Wernsted, and Sarah Lynch, who were the organizers of a Maryland marriage equality fundraiser this last Sunday that Mayor Williams also attended. They raised in the service of that cause in order to see the upholding of the legislature's legalization of same-sex marriage in Maryland. The figure I heard was $10,500 with money still coming in. And so, that was great and I appreciate their efforts in organizing and everyone who turned out there. And then, last point, I attended a press conference this morning organized by County Council Member Phil Andrews and attended by his county council colleagues, Valerie Irvin, Hans Reimer, Mark Elrich, and Nancy Florine, also by state delegates and other municipal officials in the county. Against the Maryland ballot question number five of congressional redistricting, the districts are a huge gerrymander. If you think that, if anyone in the audience thinks that Tacoma Park has challenging congressional, I'm sorry, wards, city legislative districts, I urge you to take a look at what was drawn by the state legislature and Governor O'Malley. Their legislative district boundaries are simply appalling. So, that press conference was in opposition to question five on the Maryland ballot. And I thought I'd remark on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Several things that I want to comment on. First of all, I just want to remind residents of Ward 6, something that the mayor already has mentioned for the next session of this city council, is that there will be a public hearing on the proposed parking permit zone in the streets of the lower part of New Hampshire Gardens. And anybody who's tuning into this should already have received notices in the mail, seen signs being official public hearing signs at a number of locations in the various blocks. But in case you haven't paid any attention to that, please hear this. And I ask people to, regardless of whether you support it or not, or oppose it, it's in your own best interest to come to the public hearing and express your opinion. I would consider it a favor, if any, for those who are able to come here and make public their, their feelings. Two weeks ago, a majority of members of the city council traveled to Hagerstown for several days for the annual Legislative Conference of the Maryland Municipal League, which is held every fall, for the purpose of gathering municipal officials across the state together to talk about what needs to happen in the coming legislative session that begins in Annapolis in January. I can tell you that the downtown part of Hagerstown's got a very beautiful restored street and, but it was not what you would call one of those junkets. This was not Las Vegas or Miami, or South Miami Beach. And we spent, I, all of us, I think, an awful lot of time in some, what I thought were some pretty interesting sessions. One of which was on the, well, there's a couple of them, on environmental sustainability, which not coincidentally is something that we're very much focused on. And the only observation that I wanted to make is we learned an awful lot about what other municipalities in the state of Maryland are doing or aspiring to do. And it was a point of satisfaction, and I know that others who were there with me also felt this, Kay Daniels Cohen for one, that we are doing in the city of Tacoma Park an awful lot of the things that other municipalities are aspiring to do. Not to say we didn't hear some interesting ideas of innovative things that are being done, which we can think about, but I felt very good about stuff that, that we have sort of docketed already. We still very much need to gain our sustainability certificate from the state, from, from the organization that issues that.
Sustainable Maryland Communities.
Sustainable Maryland Communities. And the, and the key ingredient there is to get the environmental, the new, newly revived environmental committee reestablished and get members on that, start holding meetings, because once we can do that, we thereby create what will be known as also as our Green Team that should enable us to, to complete the application that we have in for our certificate as part of the, one of the Sustainable Maryland Communities, of which so far there are three in the state of Maryland. I wish we were the first one, but hopefully we can be the fourth. I also want to comment on the upcoming legislature. An organization called Purple Line Now is lobbying very hard amongst interested citizens. I'd like you to know about this, about the, the future of the Purple Line. And their position is, is that unless the, the state of Maryland is able to restore funds to the Transportation Trust Fund, which apparently has been pretty well milk-dry for other purposes, even though it's supposed to be, it's not a lockbox, but supposedly that's his money that was supposed to be preserved for traffic and mass transit kinds of improvements. Unless we can get some kind of gas tax to help restore those funds, there is not going to be any money to build, to put in Maryland's contribution to allow for the construction of the Purple Line. And not just the Purple Line, but the Red Line in Baltimore City and the, the proposed, what's the, the bus?
Corridor City Transit Way.
The Corridor City Transit Way as well, which is to surf Gaithersburg going south. All three of those are going to be jeopardized. And it would be very ironic to go through this whole process trying to win federal approval of, of these projects and get construction for them, when we turn around and find out the state of Maryland doesn't have the, doesn't have the money to do this. I want people to be aware that this is a serious issue that needs to be resolved very soon, if we're going to be able to move forward. Finally, with regard to the, I want to respond to the comment made about the Adventist Hospital and what's going to happen there. As the mayor said, no decisions have been made. Clearly, that we've heard here from the president at previous meetings of the hospital, that the hospital continues to be interested in basically relocating itself from here to White Oak. But my opinion is, right at this point in time, is that right now, the hospital is in the city. I want it to stay here. I feel like this is an extraordinarily important part of our heritage, our history. It's been in the city for over 100 years. And it provides just essential services to our community. And I'm going to do everything I can to see that we can keep as much, if not all, of the hospital here. Now, what, what I can do, you know, I don't get to make these decisions. The decisions are ultimately going to be made partly by the hospital and what it wants to, and the application that it makes, and ultimately by the Maryland Healthcare Commission. But obviously, we can have a huge amount of influence on that. We're going to try, we're trying, we are in fact, working very closely with the hospital these days, which is kind of a new, new process that we didn't have five or 10 years ago, where everything was kind of separate. And there was a good deal of distrust. And we're trying to build a bridge of trust here between us on the city council, our staff, and the hospital's officers. And, and hopefully, that will allow us to come up with an optimal solution for the future healthcare of our, of our residents. But I'm not at all interested in seeing the hospital move one inch, if I were to be able to have my way. But I'm, I'm not the, the governor, I'm not the president of anything. I'm just simply here representing Ward 6. And I will try my best to help all of us come up with an equitable solution on this. So, please understand that nothing is off the table at this point in time. We'll be keeping you informed as we progress on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just really want to quickly thank all of Ward 3, and it feels like it was Lincoln and Jefferson and Manor Circle who showed up here to speak about the redistricting. You all shared a whole lot of my very own thoughts and feelings as well. And I really, I know it takes a lot of effort to, to come, come here and stand in front of, of that microphone, because there's only one thing people fear more than death, and that's speaking in public. So, that is, I really appreciate that. I also want to comment and commend Chief Goldberg for his quick comments and response to the residents concerning another incident on Elm this past week, as this incident also got my attention. Kudos to him for his willingness to step up and tell us all what's going on, even if we don't see it happening. And also, kudos to the police department for, for close to only half as many burglaries to date as for the previous three years. That kind of statistics indicate to me that our police department is really working hard to keep us as safe as possible. It's never going to be perfect, but it certainly is moving in a, in a positive direction. So many thanks to Gold Star in so little time. Here's a belated Gold Star to Old Tacoma Business Association for pulling up another really fabulous street festival in spite of the nasty weather. The place was packed one more time. Why am I not surprised? Because everything that they've planned and, and worked with this whole year has been very positive, very innovative, and also really special. So, great job. I think it rained a bit last year too, but not as bad as this year. This year was really a bit, a bit nasty. Major Gold Stars to the city staff who have given us so many great results to our continued requests, not only from the council, but for the residents as well. Your voice is heard. One, there are lights across the bridge of the community center for the first time since the building was completed, so you can see where you're going. Great job. I think this Gold Star lies in the office of the city manager. They have probably been there for a month or so. I started noticing them a couple of weeks ago and I just, it's really exciting. The council wanted lights. I think the people wanted lights. When we voted the last time, I brought my two lanterns down to light the way. So, now we have them and they're really special. Of course, I want them, I want big ones too, but we'll, we'll go to that next. Gold Stars to Housing and Community Development, who hosted a social event in the Maryland gateway of the new Ave at the Mid-Atlantic Seafood this past week. I got to tell you, I had never been in Mid-Atlantic Seafood. I've lived in Tacoma Park almost, not quite continuously, but been close to it since 1946. And as an adult, I have never been in it, Mid-Atlantic Seafood. What a real treat. What a real eye-opener. There were business owners, residents, council members, city staff, and community leaders. They were all able to swap ideas for the future of New Hampshire Avenue. This was my second social experience and a great idea from our city staff to get the community involved in a really exciting project, really opening up a New Hampshire Avenue to all of us. Now, as anybody can see who walks around the city, there are so many ADA sidewalk retrofits happening, but the one that's really caught my eye is from the firehouse to the Co-op. The residents came to the council and asked for this to be completed with great haste, as did the Tacoma Junction Task Force. And so, it happened. Gold Stars and thank you to Public Works for being at Cause with this very important project for the safety of so many Tacoma Park pedestrians. That whole stretch of sidewalk was lumpy and, and very difficult to, to walk up and down. So, Darrell's here. Thank you, thank you, thank you for getting that taken care of. It's, the night I was there, I didn't notice all the, all the cones and everything. I was just racing to a meeting, so, but they were there.
So, you're the footprints on the sidewalk?
No, I didn't do it. I didn't, I thought about putting my initials, but I didn't. The biggest Gold Star of the week goes to the Tacoma Foundation for the hottest, largest, and most fun party of the entire year, the Beer Fest. A great gathering of some really fabulous Tacoma Parkers, always well-organized, using a huge number of volunteers, and actually becoming the beginning of the very special Tacoma Park social season. Thank you Tacoma Foundation for innovative and exciting fundraiser and for always giving back to the community. I think that's probably the most important part of the foundation and, and, and all of the fundraisers that they have. It comes back to our community and some of the surrounding, the close by communities as well. Just a quick reminder, save the date, November the 17th. As long as it's not snowing, we'll continue to explore Tacoma by exploring the nooks and crannies of Ward 3. We're going to actually start, I think, at the Co-op, work our way down to the other, other side, the annex section, and we're going to finish right down at Sheridan Hancock in Opal Daniels Park. So, we, everyone will know where Sheridan Street is, so, or Sheridan Avenue. So, thank you all very much.
That's why it's still in Ward 3, right?
That's still, yes, that will still be in Ward 3, no matter what, it's, I think, I'm hoping. If we don't adopt Plan B.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address some of the concerns from people in the portion of Ward 3 that's under discussion in terms of redistricting. I live on Woodland Avenue, which is part of a different neighborhood association than, than anyone else, any other street in the ward I represent. I live literally kitty-corner to a house that's in a different ward, in Kay's ward in Ward 3. I represent the circle inside Manor Circle, and I represent houses that are right up against Councilmember Smith's ward or boundary and far closer to his house than my house. And I think I just wanted to say that we're doing our best to balance issues of race and deal with, you know, constitutionality issues in terms of Bill of Rights and equal, equal, equal voting representation. And we're doing our best to, to make neighborhood associations stay together and blocks stay together and to try to be as conservative as possible with existing boundaries. The, I think if you stay through the presentation or the discussion about the, the redistricting, you might hear from the, the task force members, the Option B that was developed was really their version of, the Option A was sort of the most conservative version, trying to hold as true as possible to, to the information they had at that time. And Option B was sort of the most radical version. They, they sort of chose to take two very different approaches. Council, when we talked about this last time, really leaned toward Option A. And as you've now seen, there's an Option C, and now there's an Option D almost, the revised map we have that was in the supplement today. But however it works out, and we're doing our best to try to make it as consistent with where we are today, I think we each do our best to represent everyone and to really treat people, everybody like treat people, everybody, like we're all part of the same community. So I know that, you know, my neighbor who lives kitty-corner to me, I speak to them frequently about city issues. They were unfortunately a house that was broken into in August, and I spoke to them a number of times, and spoke to the police force about them, and did follow up, even though they weren't in my ward. And I think we all try to do that as much as possible. And I know, and Catherine Tuna spoke about this, the neighborhood association president, there's a portion of the Sasken neighborhood that is on the other side of New Hampshire Avenue, and they're part of this potential redistricting, and they certainly feel it, too, and they feel isolated enough by New Hampshire. And we're thinking about all of that and doing our best to try to make it, to hold on to as much as possible as we go through it. Thank you.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add to what Councilmember Daniels Cohen has said about the Mid-Atlantic Seafood. By coincidence, I happened to eat dinner there this last week, and I haven't been there since it was Poppin' Suns before, and I've added it to the list of places we're going to frequent. It's fantastic. I encourage people to try it.
And I'll add just my quick thanks to the Tacoma Foundation for the Beer Fest. And note that they, I think they presold 400 tickets. They ended up with over 700 people there, and I think that was a surprise to them. So for anybody who was there late and found that maybe it wasn't, all of the opportunities weren't there as advertised, it may be because there were so many more people. The event has grown over the couple of years that it's been done, and I think they're going to be grappling with how to deal with larger crowds than they were expecting. I also wanted to note that I went to my first meeting today of the, excuse me, the Montgomery County Citizens Advisory Committee to Pepco. I started to report some of what I had learned this morning in my Facebook page, which I joined a little over a week ago. And I'm trying to use that to provide some, what I hope is interesting information to people. I'll say that among the many interesting things I learned, the most interesting and the most important to people, and I had not realized the extent to which this is really important, when your power does go out, it is really important to call Pepco and to keep calling Pepco. It's not just to call once to report that your power is out, because the way they currently have to figure out their best estimation of where the problem is, it depends on the clusters of calls that they get, and they may think that, okay, there's all of these calls over here, and we think we fixed it by this, you know, fixing this big transformer or feeder line or something that'll take care of thousands of people. And the way they know for sure whether that happened or not was to see who calls in to say, "We still don't have power." And then they can realize what that didn't fix, and it makes it much easier for them to target the particular problem. So it was impressed upon us, and I had not realized this before, that if your power is out, call when it goes out, request a call back so that you get information back from Pepco. You can give them your cellphone number or whatever it is to call back. You can go to their app, you can go to the website, you can report it any way you want, but that you've got to keep calling. And if you were, let's say, you know, you're in the second or third day and it's still not back on, call again. Keep calling. That's the way they will get to you the fastest. I couldn't believe that they wanted all these calls, but they really do want these calls. They helped them figure it out. Eventually, in two to three years or more, there will be full implementation of their smart meters that they've been installing, that I think most of us have had installed in Tacoma Park, and that will pick up a good bit of what is dealt with now by all of these calls. But until they get that fully implemented, call, call, call. And I think that's it for council comments. Does the city manager have any comments?
I have several. I'm going to go ahead and pass out a draft letter that concerns the, yeah, concerns the accessory apartments legislation that's being discussed within the Fed Committee of the county council. They'll be having a discussion on October 22nd. The staff of the housing office drafted this. We'd like to be able to send something out to the committee for their October 22nd discussion. I'd like you to, since it's probably a little fast to do it right now, if you could just email me and see if you've got any problems with this, or you have any suggestions to the letter, and if we're fortunate to go forward with this, the mayor might be able to sign it tomorrow, and then we can get it to the, to the Fed Committee for their consideration. One of the things that's important is that Tacoma Park has by far the most accessory apartments in a concentrated area, and it works well here. And so I think the Fed Committee is looking to hear from Tacoma Park as to what our experience has been with accessory apartments, so, yes?
The only point I'd noted, a quick, after a quick glance at the letter, is that you might mention that we passed a resolution in support of this initiative. I'll also mention that I was asked by some of the organizations that are in favor of this to contact the county council, hold off based on this letter.
Thank you. I wanted to piggyback on Councilmember Schultz's comments about the Purple Line. When John Brokary was here for the, to give the award on the Safe Routes to Schools event a few weeks ago, he mentioned to me that he's urging Maryland to move quickly on getting its application in to the federal government, because there are a number of very strong candidates from other parts of the country that are looking for transportation funds. So I think it is really important that we push inside Maryland to ensure that there is transportation funding for the state's portion of the Purple Line. I don't usually get taken aside to have somebody tell me something that strongly, so I think it was a strong hint that we should pick up on. I wanted to mention that the Go Committee in the county council will be discussing municipal tax duplication. Bruce, I guess you met with our former city manager and Jacob Sesker, who's the staff to the Go Committee, last week. They are having a meeting on November 5th. They've sent, he's sent out some information that he'd like us to respond to by October 25th. So I'll be trying to draft something and contacting you for something that we can write about our position on municipal tax duplication.
And I was going to comment on that on a later item in the meeting, but I'll do it now. A reminder to folks that there's the Montgomery County chapter meeting this Thursday night in Rockville, and that's the joint fall meeting with the county council. And one of the things that came up in that meeting on Friday with the Go Committee staff was that they're recommending to the county council that the discussion, any discussion of tax duplication issues take place at the Go Committee, not with the full council at the Thursday chapter meeting. And there, the sense I got from that meeting was that the Go Committee meeting will probably be postponed.
Okay.
Can I just have one follow-up?
It had been postponed till November 5th, but it could be postponed, yes?
One follow-up on the transportation or the Purple Line funding issue. What exactly is it that we would need to do?
I think that the, that the point is to lobby for funding for the Transportation Trust Fund in Maryland. The likely easiest source for that is a gas tax, but it could be other sources of funding. There's a proportion, at least 50% of the funding needs to come from Maryland for the construction of the Purple Line, and we need to show that there's that money in the state budget, so.
And the, and the city did take a position last year to support the gas tax.
Right, right.
And I testified on our behalf and on MML's behalf, we were some of the few people to take that position.
Right. Wanted to mention also that today, the, we got the proposals back for the sustainability effort. We got six responses. There's some significant differences in prices, and we'll need to review them carefully to analyze those. I guess I'm getting the stack of books any day, but we were happy to have the response of six large responses. There was also today a four-hour walkthrough of Flower Avenue with our engineering firm looking at some of the low-impact stormwater possibilities. And I also wanted to just make sure that it is fine with the council on this point. The Recreation Committee has asked that a garden be installed kind of in front of the library, a little bit tucked in between, where there's a section where the wall goes in next to the parking, front parking. And it's, so it wouldn't be kind of in the very front part, most visible, but it would be in a visible area in front of the mosaic. I've walked the site. We do need to get Miss Utility out there, because there is a, there are some utility lines in the area. But it does look like a doable site to me, but I wanted to find out if there's any concerns by council members, and if so, happy to discuss that.
I would support that.
Councilmember Crax.
We had discussed, the council had discussed that site with former city manager Matthews, I believe it was June or so. And I know that Ms. Robbins, Ms. Arnold Robbins, the library director, is fine with it, and we also discussed it with Greg Clark, or at least when I say "we," informally. And the council allocated $1,500 for preparation for gardening, whether it was at that site or another one. So we did discuss this prior to Councilmember Smith's tenure here, but I think I'm still very much in favor of that, if it works out.
And I know that some of the funds are being used for the garden over at the Rec Center on New Hampshire Avenue.
Yeah, it's not an either-or proposition. It seems like the more of these, the better.
It looks like there's two other questions on this, Councilmember Daniels Cohen, and then Councilmember Smith.
When we got the site down in Sahara Tacoma, down in, next to Police Station, that was actually the second, that was actually Ms. Braithwaite's suggestion, because our first, the Recreation Committee's first choice was the site that they're requesting right now. It's way off of everybody's beaten path, it's close to water, and it's a perfect location in the sun and not quite in the concrete, like down below, which I don't think anyone's going to give up the down below one either, because it's pretty functional, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that's true. I think one of the concerns, and it's simply a thing that the committee needs to manage, is we thought that things like tomatoes that could be thrown at the mosaic probably are not the best choice. So it does look really tempting, but I think it's otherwise a good, a good location.
Yeah, the tomatoes can grow down in the desert, down on the concrete.
I have a question regarding Flower Avenue. When is the community meeting scheduled?
Do we know when the committee, community meeting would be?
In today's discussion, we talked about having a stakeholders meeting sometime late October, early November, and then follow with a community meeting probably early December. So we'd have plenty of time to publicize it and get it in before the, you know, big holiday season.
Okay, thank you. And I'll support the garden.
And I'll give tentative support to the garden. I'd appreciate seeing tomorrow where you're talking about exactly.
Sure, sure. That's all.
And I would say, I would say likewise.
You have anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is adoption of minutes. We have four sets of minutes for April 23rd, April 30th, May 3rd, May 7th. Would somebody like to move adoption?
So move second.
It's been moved in second. If all of those are favorable, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Those four sets of minutes are adopted. We will now move to our public hearing. This is a public hearing on proposed adjustments to the salary and compensation of the mayor and council members effective for the council term beginning in November 2013.
My understanding is there's nobody signed up.
Okay, does anybody wish to testify? Okay, I don't see anybody clamoring to testify. We will now close the public hearing.
Just a note, though, we did receive public comments, I think, guys, from Ed Sharp.
Okay, thank you. So those will be entered in the record. The next item is a presentation of the recycling art project. And we have a couple of people here to do that.
Hi there.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
That's okay. I was so surprised you'd finally come up. I'm Sally Booker. I'm here on behalf of the Arts and Humanities Commission of Tacoma Park, and I have the distinct honor and pleasure of presenting to the council a commissioned work of art that we are about to, that the artist will unveil in just one moment. I want to just give you a little bit of history about the project. This is our first, and we hope, annual recycling artist in residency, in residence in Tacoma Park. She was chosen from many applicants and spent two months this summer at the Department of Public Works, where she had a lovely, large, open studio. She created many works of art, and this being one of them. And I just want to say that this was a really wonderful collaboration in our community, and it was just a real pleasure. We worked, it was the Arts and Humanities Commission, the City of Tacoma Park, the Department of Public Works, Main Street Business Association, and Scrap DC, which is a DC agency. We all joined forces to bring this into being monetarily and otherwise. We had a Trashy Art Day, which the mayor was, took part in, and a Trashy Art Contest. And I guess some of you did, too, yes. I recognize you now.
I didn't know.
Yes, and we hope to make that an annual event as well. It was really a wonderful, wonderful event. So this is the culmination of that, and we're happy to, you know, we believe that we raised a lot of public awareness about recycling and issues of trash. And it was an opportunity for both our community and our local artists to shine. So it was a win-win situation for everybody.
And have some of those projects gone into shop windows?
And we also, yes, we had a display in Old Town in a shop window for a while of some of the winners, and there was an article in the Gazette about it. And we're hoping it was chronicled by our local video people, and they're going to put something together about it also. So without further ado, I'm going to present Renee to you, Renee Lockman, our artist resident. She'll explain the piece, and we'll do the unveiling. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. So my name is Renee Lockman. I actually live in Ward 6. And so I'm a assemblage artist and a sculptor. I teach at Montgomery College, and I actually teach drawing there. But as part of this, I do a lot of recycling, and I'm always walking my dog and picking up things. And I have my neighbors' trains, they give me all their donations, whether or not they're walking around, or if they go on trips, they just drop these presents off for me. So for this particular piece, I decided that I was going to use, try and use some of the donations and some of the found objects that I had already accumulated, as well as repurposed objects, things from community forklift, and any other thing I could actually come up with. So I was, the purpose was to do this commission for you guys, but I also was working on a number of pieces that, for a show that I have in another couple of weeks at Glendee Mansion. And for this particular piece, I decided that I wanted to stay with the tree nature. And, but as I was working on it, it became more humanized, and I just happened to see that, I love figure drawings, so I'm always teaching that. So I just sort of went with it. And when I finished it, and it was in a show that DC Scrap presented, she wanted me to name what it was besides the tree person. So I came up with Josephine Baker. And when I came back, and I said, "Well, I'm not sure if I really want that." But I looked at it, and it really does, to me, epitomize Josephine Baker, you know, sort of outrageous, which I think you'll agree with. And I like the fact that she was a civil rights activist, first African-American to be up here in films, that she was a spy. So I reviewed these things as I was going on. And especially, because I have one child, that she adopted 12 kids. So—so she was sort of ahead of her time. So as the first artist-in-resident for Tacoma Park, I thought I would do something in tribute to her. So I'm just going to unveil it.
We should go around and see it.
Yeah, we could go around and see it, too.
We've got to go and see it. Because we can't—we can only see the back.
It's not a bad idea.
[laughing]. So she, you know, directly what kinds of pieces I used. She danced a lot of the new, or she had to just get the rest in the hands, something like that. And so I really wanted to incorporate a lot of the things that I had already donated. And so.
Welcome back.
[laughing]. Thank you so much for doing it. I hope you'll sign it. I used to do it very small. And this will hang there. I'll get some pictures of you.
So you're the first to make it.
Going to the public works section.
Can we get a picture?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
So she's presenting?
Hi. You're the mayor.
All right. And I want to thank the Arts and Humanities Commission of Sarah, Daryl, for letting me use their space and do all of this great stuff. And all the benefits I've gotten from everything, I believe, for about two months.
She's quite spectacular.
I believe so. She's also—yeah. She's showing the historic Tacoma, has this featuring Renee's work in the window.
She is great. It's beautiful. Fabulous work.
Thank you.
projects in this series, ability to have more of these? Has there been any thought about either where it'll be displayed? Will it travel? Will it tour? Is it going to have a permanent home? Any thought?
It has a permanent home. We decided for the first one, it would—its permanent home would be at the Department of Public Works.
Yes.
So that's where it's going to be. And the one next year could be—we'll choose another place. We're thinking of maybe doing it in cooler months, because it proved to be quite warm over there this summer with no air conditioning.
But Josephine Baker traveled a bit. She got around.
She could travel, yes. But for now, her home's going to be over there, at the Department of Public Works.
Good. Thanks.
Just one quick follow-up question. I know that we had had some issues with minor vandalism on the faces of the U.S. Census display outside the library. Is that—have there been any more problems associated with that installation?
I've not heard that there's any problems.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I guess my sense is that we're running a little behind, and it's almost nine o'clock. I'd like to take just a short break, and then we'll do the redistricting discussion. The presentation of the redistricting option, and I understand that we have a revisal of the revision. So we have some—a salmon sheet. And for anybody—do we have any of the salmon sheets in the rack for anybody who's interested in this discussion? If you don't have a salmon sheet, you need one. If you're working off a blue sheet, it's old. Although I can't say that we've had time to look at the salmon sheet.
Salmon sheet just reinstates that block.
The map's just been put out.
That's all that does?
Yeah.
All those people, that's all that does?
Between the blue and the salmon.
We'll get the report. Come on down.
I get the short, easy part of this. Just on behalf of the task force, we're pleased to present to you the next option, the third option, which has gone through several iterations, obviously. And we're just pleased to be able to present this. I'm going to turn it over to Jim, who can get into more details than I can. And he's promised that presentation and discussion, his part of it, will be short. But we obviously will be happy to hear any questions or comments. Jim?
First, I want to thank Congress—or Congress. Something ahead of ourselves here. I deal with two of the—two of the other things in mind. Councilmember Mail for pointing out a problem with calculations today, which we corrected in time for tonight's meeting. Now, the fact is, we had that corrected. This thing has gone through so many iterations. We had it corrected in some worksheets we were working with when we first made the—when it first came to our attention last—last spring about the revision of the—those two apartment buildings. And then somehow, in the copying and moving with the worksheets, we ended up with the old data, and I apologize for that. I take credit for that and apologize. But it does change some things. And so we had a revision just as of today to—to take into account the new numbers. And you have in front of you—I apologize—but somewhat—somewhat clumsily made maps and the such in order to get us to this point. The issue here is straightforward. We needed to increase from the existing—from the existing wards. We needed essentially to increase the population of Ward Five and increase the population of Ward Six. Those were the two main issues, because those populations had decreased relative to over the last census. In doing so, we've—as you see in—in the options that we presented, we're proposing to move the blocks that are essentially along Carroll Avenue and Lincoln-Jackson and Sligo Creek, Jefferson-Lincoln and Sligo Creek and Maple, and Jefferson-Lincoln and Carroll, in total, from Ward Three to Ward Five. And we've also proposed to move the blocks that are along that sort of triangle down along Linden Avenue down in there, from Ward Two to Ward Six. Those are the blocks that are listed on your sheet, bounded by New Hampshire, Larch, Olson, Linden, New Hampshire, Kentland, Hope and Larch, New Hampshire, East-West Highway and Kentland, Kentland, Hope, Larch, and the city boundary. The option that you had in front of you originally also had two blocks being moved from the west side of what was essentially Ward Two, in the west side of of New Hampshire. But with the new numbers, it's not necessary to do that. So the revised option C as of today essentially just simply keeps those blocks in Ward Two. So there's nothing that's to the west of of New Hampshire that moves from Ward Two into Ward Six. So that's essentially the boundaries we're talking about. The rationale for the boundaries, again, is that we had to increase Five, we had to increase Six. You cannot increase Six without taking from Two, because it's the only ward that articulates with Six. And you cannot increase Five without taking from either Two, Four, or Three. And the problem is that—we presented some ideas on doing this with Four, and that wasn't really acceptable to the council the last time we met. To move from Two would then require us to move more into Two, because we would then have a too-small Ward Two if we were to move from Two to Five. And so that really left us only moving that small area that articulates between Three and Five from Three to Five.
One question.
Yes.
On the—on the—I'll call it on the—on this map, the lowest, most right block of the proposed Ward Five with 161 in it.
Yes.
If you had asked me what the current configuration in that block was, I would have said that more of that block was in Ward Two currently. But I—I see from your list of the things that moved that it didn't move. So I'm assuming that my recollection is incorrect and that the—the—this accurately reflects what is currently in Two. It stays in Two in that block?
Is—to my knowledge, it is correct. Yes.
And I was—I think I was mostly thinking of the nursing home.
The nursing home moves to Five.
Right. From?
From Two. I'm sorry. From?
Three.
Three.
Is the nursing home in Three now?
Yeah, I think it is. Let me—you still represent that.
Well, I know. And I never—I never—I never represented the nursing home, as far as I knew.
No, it's in Ward Two.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it's in Ward Two.
The Ward Two map is in our—is in our original, it's a little thing.
Right.
The original, current town.
Right. And the nursing home is in Ward Two.
Mm-hmm. I'll have to—I have to check a map on that. I don't have it in front of me.
It—it shows—it shows that it's currently in Ward Two.
And then it moves to Five.
Right. But that's not listed in your moving blocks.
It is. It's included in that block from—as far as I can tell—from Lincoln to Jackson. It's—a—it's—in that portion.
It's included as a move. It's just—it's indicated as a move from Three to Five instead of a move from Two to Five. So it's—I'm sorry.
That is correct. That portion—that is correct. It is a move from Two to Five.
So does that—are we—are we dealing with semantics, or are we dealing with numbers?
We're bringing the entire block into Ward—it currently is split. And we're bringing the entire block into Ward Five.
Well, except—except for the split along Jackson, right? And along Sligo Creek. Because it's—it's drawn on this map as split.
It goes behind the houses on Jackson. That's correct.
Right. Which is the current configuration.
That's correct.
And so, given the fact that if the nursing home moves from Two to Five rather than from Three to Five, are the numbers for the—for the new—
Good question.
For the change of—the old numbers to the new numbers correct?
I need to look at exactly how those splits—to answer your question, I'll have to look exactly where the split is. And I can do that, but I don't have it in front of me right now.
Okay. Okay.
It would only change by a small amount. I won't—I will say that. But I'll have to check the numbers. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I'd need to double-check and see what actually counts in terms of population of the nursing home.
I don't know.
Because I think it may not make any difference.
It may not be counted. Yeah.
Don't know.
In terms of census counts. I'll have to double-check that.
Yeah.
Seems like that is a residence.
Yeah, but that's a transition residence.
Yeah, I think that's—that's why I paused my answer as well, because I think that the majority of the people who are residents there actually maintain their formal place of residence somewhere else. So I think that the—at least the databases showed a very small population in that building.
So it may be a zero difference.
My assumption—my assumption is it may be a relatively small difference.
In the interest of accuracy, we'll find out, regardless of the size.
Other questions?
One question.
Yeah.
It doesn't—it's—it's not an issue that it's not in the presentation for tonight, but at some point—and the city staff might be able to do this, or the committee—it would just be good to get a final assessment of the—the population breakdown by race, ethnicity, the difference between the current status quo and sort of whatever option we end up going with when we're—when we're down to one option. And that's not—again, that's something the committee necessarily wants to do.
Well, we could—we could reduce that almost immediately. I mean, we have the—the numbers—we—if—it all depends on what option you go with.
Right.
If you were to accept this option as-is, I could tell you that in 10 minutes, so just—
Yeah, I think it's—
Yeah, I just—I mean the—
Not we don't—
That's all in us, just the two together in a single document.
We haven't presented the ethnic breakdown of the current.
Current, right.
So we can easily do that to compare with—with the proposed.
And just as a caution, anytime you're dealing with a split block, you don't have—you don't have good numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Which is the case now.
Well, for example, when we had to reestimate the buildings, we had no estimate—we have no count in the buildings of what the ethnic and racial breakdown of those buildings might be, since it was just an estimate of what would be the—the population once they're populated. And so—excuse me—what we simply did was use the existing proportions and then bring it across to the new numbers. It's an estimate, but it's the best we have at the moment.
And the—your sense of the overall difference, high and low, at a variance of 7.6%? That—I'm assuming it's—well, 10% is the maximum split, and the more you can get away from 10, the happier you are?
Correct. Yeah. This is the lowest of the options that we've presented so far. The other one was 8.6. And so I think that's true. I'll have to look at all of them. But this did drop down a bit with the recalculating of the buildings. And the—the general litmus is to be under 10%. And we have met that goal. We'd obviously like to be at 0%, but that's not likely to happen.
Yeah, I was just thinking about whether—the—whether, depending on what we—what we might look at, if there were something that we were trying to do to tweak this kind of—how many people would be—would take—it—how many moves would get us to the limit of 10%? About how many people?
One thing you discover when working with these data, and I—I understand that we can tweak it a number of different ways. I mean, there's many, many gyrations that could go through to little tweaks here and there. But it's kind of like one of those punching dolls. You hit here, and something comes out over there.
Right.
I mean, what you—what we found is, as we try to reduce one ward, we got that down to where it's supposed to be, and all of a sudden, we have a new high and low configuration. You know, some other ward comes in as being the high and the low. And so anything can be tweaked, but you've got to be sort of cautious at it.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I want to thank you. I think that—I think your—your committee for its diligence on this. I think at first blush, when we looked at this, it sort of seems like an easy math problem. You just keep sorting houses, and then you think, "Oh, we—we've got to make it into blocks." Or, "No, we have to do it into census blocks," which—and—and then you realize that that's not going to get you down below 10%. You need to start to split blocks. And when you do that, you get into the realm of estimation. And then you—it's no longer a science. It's using one's best judgment, which, you know, good people can disagree on. And—and so there is—a—there's a tipping point, I guess, in terms of optimization as you're characterizing it, whereas you try to make it a certain ward— as you are characterizing it, whereas you try to make it a certain ward be just really cohesive and connected, but then you end up, in other words, we've got more than one goal here. We're trying to meet the constitution, but we're also trying to preserve neighborhoods as people subjectively think of them, we're trying to preserve associations, we're not unmindful of racial compositions, and you can't meet all of those, at least unless you start using quantum physics and fourth and fifth and sixth dimensions, I suppose. So I would just say, I think you've done a really good job so far. And I would say with regard to ward six, now that you've taken that little nub out of the heart of ward two, and, and New Hampshire Avenue would be the boundary line all the way, from Sligo Creek Parkway all the way down to Ethan Allen Avenue, I think that's a reasonable boundary line. Now, the people that live on Larch and Kentland may say, I'm wrong, so we'll see.
Thank you for your comments.
Councilmember Smith.
I want to thank you for the work that you guys have put into this. But can you explain to me the difference between option B and option C for ward five?
I don't actually have option B in front of me.
Okay. And, and option B, what, does that get to the 10 percent or below the 10 percent level that you're trying to hit?
Well, all the options that we presented to you, we did not present any option to you that wasn't at least below the 10 percent limit.
Okay.
Some of them, some of them were a lot closer than others, but none of the options that we presented to you were below the 10 percent, or were above the 10 percent limit. One difference between B and, yeah, I got it here, actually, one option, difference between B and, and option C is that in option B, in order to increase ward five, we dipped into ward two along those blocks that are to the south of Carroll Avenue, into the Long Branch Sligo neighborhood.
Right.
And we then did not take anything from the, the blocks that are along Mississippi, where the current, currently along Mississippi is in ward five, and we reunite, we put that into ward four.
And are blocks, I guess, wholer in option B or option C?
You mean the number of split blocks?
Right.
The number of split blocks don't change substantially between the two options.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Mayles, do you have other?
I did, briefly. A resident brought up the issue of Manor Circle, the inside of Manor Circle.
Mm-hmm.
And from my reading on the map, that's roughly 40, 45, 46 people, I can't quite see the digits. It looks like because ward three is not, under this revised proposal, the biggest ward, you could, in theory, move those 46 people in, from ward two into ward three. Ward three would still not be the biggest ward, so it wouldn't change the, the variance. If that was something that was a priority for the neighborhood association.
That they would like to be moved in.
Yeah, if they, if that were something that was otherwise desirable.
We, we, in, in doing our, the maps, especially this option C, we are actually, we're looking for minimal changes. And if it didn't need to be moved, we didn't move it. Your choice in the end, as to how you, you know, end up with the redistricting, and as I understand, there will be public hearings on that.
I just wanted to confirm that I was correct in thinking that won't change.
There's no change.
As long as you don't touch the top and the bottom, you're not adjusting the variance.
Again, I'd have to run the numbers.
Sure.
The biggest concern is that ward two is kind of low.
Right.
And so if I move something out of ward two, it may become the lowest ward, and that does change the number. This is the punching doll kind of situation.
Okay.
But I, I can't do that until I look at it.
Thank you.
But again, if you wish us to look at that, we can at least tell you what the consequences would be.
Okay.
And it, and it will be helpful to have you look at that block that I was asking about with the nursing home in it before checking any of the other stuff.
I'll do that tomorrow.
So that we know, because that can affect, my sense is it can affect wards two, three, and five.
Yeah, I, I also, I think that Acting City Manager Ledlow is correct in saying that I'm not sure exactly how the census counted that. We have to check that as well as where exactly those, that falls out, but we can do that pretty quickly.
Right, and, and, and the way this map works is that the, the block count is the, looks like 161 for that block.
Correct.
And then what you've done is, you've split it the same way that it's split now on Jackson, so that part of that 161 is in two.
That is correct.
Okay.
That was already in two, and so we didn't move that part.
Right, I just, I just wanted to make sure in how, you, you've essentially, the way these maps work is that the number that's in the block is the total for the block.
Correct.
And if there's a split, that takes place, but isn't reflected in split numbers on the map.
That's correct.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ah ha. I just want to also thank you, the, the committee, for all the work that you, you've done. I know it's been not necessarily a labor of love, but.
It's been interesting.
Yeah, I really, I really appreciate the time and effort that you've put into it. I, I don't know, you all weren't here, there was a bit, during the citizens' comments, there was a bit of pushback from a section of ward three. So actually, it was quite a lot of pushback, so, but nonetheless, still appreciate all the hard work that you've done.
Thank you.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to echo what other council members have said, that, you know, we sit up here and we see a committee come in a couple of times for a short discussion, and sometimes don't appreciate how much work you've put in, but I think in this case, we've developed this good appreciation of the, the complexity of this problem. I also think it's interesting to me that, kind of, community reaction to some of these changes, you know, people don't want to change, they want to, they want to stay with their current wards where they are, and, and so it makes it an even more complex problem. But again, I, I thank you, as other council members have, for the work that you've put into this.
Well, let me just, for a moment, accept the thanks on the part of the entire committee while I'm standing here. This has been a great group to work with, they've worked very hard, and it's been a good group to work with.
I think, among other things, you've, you've developed a good appreciation of my part of how difficult this is. It seems like such an easy task when we assign it, but it's obvious that it's, I think aptly described as the, you know, it's a whack-a-mole.
It is, at times.
I'll add my thanks, and double check on where we're going from here. It sounds like you can get back to us pretty quickly, like maybe tomorrow, with double checking the question about that one block, and it'll, then we'll also have the map that has the, the fixed area that's kind of penned out now, and then we'll, we'll have something that we can look at and see if we need to do other, any other tweaks, or go with it, or what we're going to do. So I guess at this point, we'll say thank you to the committee for your work, and with the additional information tomorrow, you've completed your task. Everybody happy with that?
Well, it doesn't bode well for us.
We have numbers, and so as you're tweaking, if you want to go back and refer to our data that we have, the city also has that data, but we'll be, I'll be glad to provide that to you.
Okay, great, thanks all very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just wanted to reiterate what Jim said, that this has been, this task force has taken the job very seriously. It's been fun, not always just amicable, we've had a few heated discussions among ourselves, but it's been a great group of people to work with, it's been my real privilege to, to do that. So I thank you as well as you.
Should stand up?
Yes, you can have, I can't hear him. Ellen, come on, stand up here. We've got four out of six now tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
So thank you.
Thank you.
We will move to our regular meeting, and the first item is a resolution endorsing the FY 2014 Community Development Block Grant awards. Ms. Daines is here.
Good evening. As the mayor noted, the council is being asked to adopt a resolution endorsing the recommendations of the Community Development Block, Block Grant Review Committee for funding of projects in next fiscal year. Joining us this evening is Jackie Schtick, who is one of the members of the review committee, and he's prepared to answer any questions if you have any regarding the committee's decision-making process. As noted in the memorandum, we anticipate receiving $115,000 in block grant funds beginning July 1st of fiscal year FY14. Of that, 15, 15 percent, or roughly $17,000, can be spent on projects that are defined as public service, with the balance going towards capital improvements. We received 10 applications for public service projects exceeding way beyond the amount of dollars that were available, and the review committee selected three that they would like to forward to the county for consideration for funding next year. The first is a community life program, which is an academic enrichment program offered by MHP over at 7610 Maple Avenue, and that's before and after-school programs for, and preschool programs for children ages three to 11. The second program that the committee is recommending for funding is a micro enterprise development program, which is focused on local food production, providing job training and mentoring opportunities for local residents that are engaged in food production activities, and that would be through the Community Crossroads Food Network, or a Crossroads Community Food Network program. The third funding option that they're recommending is Smart Choices with Emotions, which is an intervention program offered by the YMCA for at-risk middle school students, students that are at risk of being suspended or expelled from school. Of the capital projects, we received three applications, and the committee is recommending full funding plus change, if you will, for the Critical Needs Home Repair Program that was proposed by Rebuilding Together, and that would provide funding for the repair of a wide variety of code-related issues, as well as other important corrections to existing housing conditions for income-eligible homeowners. Before I turn it over to Jackie, if you have any questions, I'd like to note that there were many projects that were proposed that were deserving of funding, and at the staff level and in consultation with the committee members, we're recommending that two of the community service projects be transferred over to the city clerk's office for consideration under the city's Small Cities Grant Program. They have discrete expenditures within their original proposal that we felt would be appropriate for funding under that umbrella of the city. We're also going to be meeting with the two applicants that had proposed emergency food assistance, to see if we can fund them, albeit at a lower level, through the city's emergency assistance program. If it's within the parameters of the program that the council has adopted, and we believe we have funding available for them. The other advantage of doing it that way is that funding would be available now rather than waiting until the next fiscal year. As far as the capital projects, we received a proposal from Mission Serve, which had done the community build over the Fourth of July weekend this last year. We've encouraged them to submit an application for the request for proposals that we'll be issuing this week or next for another home repair program that this council has funded for this fiscal year. And then the other capital project that has not been recommended for funding are announcements over at BY Morrison Park, and we're looking at alternative funding sources, but will most definitely be included in the FY14 proposed budget that our department will forward to the council for consideration.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Simmons.
Since I'm intimately involved with a number of these projects, I'm going to recuse myself of this discussion, and I'll be back after this agenda item's over.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I see where, where the committee suggested that some of these groups go to other, other places for funding. I mean, this is probably a silly question, but is that ever followed up? Do, does the committee follow up with what they, whether they do it or not? I mean, some of it looks like it's going to flip back into the, the city's budget possible, for possible funding?
We've contacted the groups that have been recommended, or that were not recommended for funding, and notified everyone of their recommendation status. And then the two groups that we've recommended for, that they look at, the Small Cities Grant Program, they've been contacted, and their applications have already been forwarded over to the city clerk's office for that process.
Okay.
The others, we have requested an opportunity to meet with Mano Foods, as well as the folks on New Hampshire Avenue, to talk about how we might be able to work together to distribute food to, for, through the food pantry, or through their mobile food pantry program. So we've, we're in the process of chatting with those folks to make them aware of the other options that might be available to them.
It just so, how do I say this, it's heart-wrenching, all the, the groups that have asked for funding, and then to have to turn them back because it's just, it's just not there, and I just was hoping that there was some other place that they could go to see if they could get funds, so.
Which is one of the reasons why we sat down, looked at the budget, and said, you know, these are good programs, they could fit in these other categories.
Yeah.
And the nice thing about that is, if they're successful, their funding will become available much more quickly than those projects that were approved through the block grant program, assuming you endorsed the recommendations of the committee.
Yeah, this is, this is a position I, I wouldn't want to be in, to make these choices, got to be very difficult. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Hi. I understand why you couldn't possibly consider the ECDC Enterprise Development Group's request, because that was the entire amount of money that was available for all the projects. But would it not have been possible to have commented to refer this application to the large, city's large grant program?
When those guidelines become available and a request is, or a solicitation is made for those programs for FY14, we will forward that information on to them. Right now, there hasn't been any announcement made.
Okay. When, when does, when, what, I, I should remember from year to year, but I don't, as to what this, what the timing of, of that application process, when do you launch it, and when does it close?
We usually look for applications in early January for that program.
Okay.
So that in time for the council to consider it before the budget gets too far.
Okay, because I have, thank you, I have spoken to, to Kevin Kelly at the ECDC and suggested that they try that approach as well. I said frankly, if you can get money from a large grant program, you're more, you're more likely to get it sooner than if you go through the block grant program.
And with a lot less paperwork, yeah.
And a lot less paperwork. Another question, there's two other things that I wanted to ask you about, and one is with regard to the capital allocations, where you put all the eggs pretty much in the one basket. In light of the fact that the Mission Serve program seemed to receive so much positive, what, positive notoriety, is that a good thing, I guess? Acclaim, thank you. And that people were hoping to be able to reapply, you know, those that didn't finish the work or need more work. the work or need more work, or others who wanted, didn't know about. I'm wondering what the reasoning was, and I'm not challenging necessarily the reasoning, why it wasn't thought to maybe put some of that, provide money to that organization. I mean, since you, you had like 16,000 additional dollars that you're asking Rebuilding Together to accept, more than they actually requested, that plus maybe a little bit could have been put over to the Mission Serve was, I'm sure that's something you thought about, I was just wondering how you came to that, the outcome.
That, that option was presented to the review committee. And in going through the selection process, Rebuilding Together came out far above the Mission Serve project. Both organizations were well-regarded. The committee members that voiced an opinion, and I, please correct me if I'm wrong, felt that there was more of a local connection with the Rebuilding Together program than there was with Mission Serve. So.
Okay.
Jackie, you're going to have to come up here.
In our, in our deliberations regarding the two programs, it was, it was overlapping effort for the city. And so it was also felt that if there was unfinished work from last year, that the Rebuilding Together folks should be given a heads-up on that to pick up in that area as well. And so we thought that there was a very strong local, local tie with the rebuilding, and they might be able to accomplish more than the other, the Mission Serve program.
Okay. Now, I understand it's a judgment decision, you know, based on, you know, stuff that's not up, you know, that I'm not fully aware of, I haven't seen the full applications, and I don't want to. But I just saw that the Mission Serve, with all those young people clamoring on the buses, made a huge visible impact, and I, and I just created a lot of spirit, a lot of sense of community and excitement, and at least in my ward. And I would hope that some are another going forward in the future, we can, we can pick back that, pick that back up.
I think one of the aspects about that, though, that the committee considered was that many of the volunteers were not from this area.
Oh, I understand that.
And so we kind of like, oh, well, so you get busloads of people, and it's great effort on their part, but they also didn't necessarily draw on the youth in this area.
Okay.
To accomplish the work. And the great skills that many of the local youth could probably benefit from.
Okay. Thank you for that. One other thing I wanted to mention on the, the one, the part-time contract employee for senior issues, I hope that that can get funded under the small grant program, because I think that the development of a database of Tacoma Park seniors, since I am one, I'm not the only one on the council either, is a real, really valuable need to inventory who, who our seniors are, because when you're talking about emergency preparedness, those are the people who are the most vulnerable in almost all emergencies that you can think of. And we need to know who they are, and where they are, and what their needs are, and well, we can't fund it this, under this block grant. I really just want to say for the record that I think this is something we, needs, needs to be given consideration somewhere along the way, maybe even in the city budget.
Just as a point of information, the Small Cities Grant Program, the maximum is $2,500, I believe. In going through that particular application, there were some discrete projects that fit within those funding guidelines. It does not include, or would not include, the contract employee that was included in the proposal. One of the comments that was made by the review committee members was that this might be a project, given the potential impact on the community as a whole, that the council may wish to consider in, as it pulls together its FY 14 budget. But there is a small element to this overall project that would be a good fit for the Small Cities Grant.
Good to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. First, I wanted to comment that I, I love seeing the proposals in here, or the funding recommendations for youth programs. I, over the last couple of days, was reading a bunch of articles on how the United States compares to other countries in its investment in young children, and particularly disadvantaged young children, and we're at the bottom of all of the OECD, and so it's nice to see we're doing our, our, maybe a small bit. On the issue of the Critical Needs Home Repair, and then subsequently the RFP, is it going to be a challenge to manage those sort of two sets of partners and making sure that they have enough residents? And I guess what I was thinking about was, how do we manage demand appropriately? I was thinking about the fact that, at least for the first time in a year, we sent a, associated with the ballot, or, I'm sorry, not the ballot, the charter issue, we sent a piece of paper to everyone's houses. If there's a way that we need to reach out to people who might benefit from these programs that would have relatively low cost for the city, you know, if there's something we need to do, I just, I encounter residents, and it's typically sort of one at a time, and often by chance, who clearly could benefit from this program, but I don't have any organized way to get to them and to teach them about the opportunities either.
Linda Walker, anticipating that very issue coming up, has already started advertising for soliciting applications from eligible homeowners for this program, recognizing we're going to be going through and doing it. So in this month's newsletters, there's a very small announcement of the program, and we're collecting applications, we'll be notifying the folks that are receiving property tax assistance through the city's, can't remember the name of the program, but there are a lot of people on that list that are already income-qualified and own their homes. And then we'll be continuing to solicit applications. So if you have someone within your ward that you think might be an appropriate fit, send us their address.
Okay.
And we can take it from there and go through it. The application process is very straightforward. We're proposing to use the one very exactly the same, a little tweaked, for the one that we did for Mission Serve, and it's pretty straightforward. So we're hoping that between the RFP, that we will be overseeing as far as soliciting applications for, and the Rebuilding Together one, which they will be in charge of soliciting, and, because it's their project, that we'll be able to address a multitude of needs throughout the community. But if you have anyone, send them our way, and we will discreetly inquire.
Send it to Linda or to you?
Linda would be good, yeah.
Got it?
That's Linda W. at TacomaGO.org.
Thank you.
Or Linda W. at TacomaParkMD.gov.
I know, I haven't gotten used to saying that now, but I like it much better.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. I support these recommendations, and I commend the evaluation committee on the care, and the Ms. Daines, on the care that was obviously taken in evaluation of the proposals and the suggestion of alternative routes to funding for very worthy products, so, projects. So I think that's great. And I did want to take the occasion, though, to comment on one item that is suggested for consideration for the city's FY 14 budget, which is the BY Morrison Park evaluation. My own opinion at this point is that that BY Morrison Park evaluation should very likely be deferred until after the disposition of other major parcels in the Tacoma Junction area is decided in some fashion. And also, we've rationalized the handling of traffic, pedestrian, and bicycle flow through the junction, that that's something that can wait, and that's something that, at this moment, although we're many months, well, we're several months from evaluation of an FY 14 budget, that I would, at this point, not wish to see in the FY 14 budget. So I just thought I'd take the opportunity to say that, given that it's a part of the recommendations here. And thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Grimes. I had, I had to chuckle when I saw that item. I thought, why, we just did that 30 years ago?
It's in pretty rough shape. So even if you don't change the configuration, it needs some work. But funding decisions are all city councils, yeah.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sir, I just had a couple of questions regarding the Critical Needs Home Repair. How many people does the organization estimate will be helped?
I gotta look. They are anticipating 30 homeowners.
Okay. And what's the maximum income a homeowner can have?
One person can, they use around 49,000.
Roughly 49,000 to 50,000 for a single-person household. That number goes up depending upon the number of people that live in the household, whether they earn income or not.
Okay. And is it for ongoing problems in the house, or is it like, what type of problems?
It can be anything from roof repair to plumbing changes, chipping, peeling paint, missing siding, sidewalks.
Does the, is the homeowner required to pay any portion of?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions on this? Would somebody like to introduce the resolution?
Move it. Second?
Moved by Councilmember Grimes, second by Councilmember Mail. Any further comments from the council? Any public comments on this resolution endorsing these projects? Mr. Lovelace in the back.
Yeah, this is Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. I'm just curious, what if somebody has other funds, like other programs coming in, like Christmas in August, whatever you call it, or the, or some of the places like Habitat and Humanity, who are also helping work on their house? Will that affect their, plus their income, if it's under 40,000 or 50,000, will that affect their eligibility by any chance?
No, that would not impact their eligibility.
It wouldn't have impacted at all. They're getting assistance from one area, and they, would they still be eligible for this, right?
Correct.
That's great, because you never know, one could fall through and the other may not. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the question I had.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Councilmember Siemens abstained.
I know that you have a lot of things going on, but I would like to thank the members of the review committee. They're noted under the Special Consideration section, and include Frank Abrilian, Andrew Kellerman, Howard Cohen, Anand.
Anand Parikh.
Parikh, and Jackie.
Thank you to all of them. And just a clarification, am I correct in saying Councilmember Siemens abstained, or because of recusal, how does that get noted?
I think the recus gets noted as a, it's a recusal.
As a recusal?
It's different from an abstain. He's not participating.
Right. He's coming in, I think. We were trying to decide the fate of your vote, whether you were an abstention or a recusal, how it was noted.
How was the recusal?
Well, you were, but whether that is how that gets recorded.
Oh.
And I guess maybe it is.
That's up to the city clerk.
We will move to our consent agenda. Six items on the consent agenda, including a number of single-reading ordinances. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda? I'll let the clerk decide that one. There were some people down here who all spoke at once. And since there are single-reading ordinances, we'll need a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Aye.
Councilmember Mail.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Thank you. We will now move to work session, and the first of our two items is a follow-up on the committee procedures discussion.
Can you remind us where we were on this? Please.
Once we get to it. Near as I can tell, it sounds like what we're supposed to do is go over Article 1 of Chapter 2.16, and then we have items that we have not discussed yet, which is the status of McNAC, the Montgomery College Neighborhood, Neighbors Advisory Committee, and the discussion of the Noise Ordinance and the Noise Control Board. So we have those three items. Is that correct?
That's correct. The, the one thing I think the council had agreed on was adding the lobbying prohibition or, or guidelines into, into the articles that it would refer to all the committees. And there were, during your discussions, you've talked about having a preference for committee co-chairs. I wondered if there's any reason why you want to make that, put that guideline in, or any other guidelines in the, I'm sorry, in general provisions, rather than individual committees? So I'm really just looking for any other thoughts that the council has about what revisions you might like to see to Article 1 general provisions of this.
And, and your senses on the preference for co-chairs, that that language is, is fine that way, so that it expresses our preference for co-chairs, but it means if they wanted to have chairs, they could do that?
Well, that would be up to the council. I, I guess.
Is your sense that the committees would rather have clear direction or flexibility?
Oh, my guess would be that they'd prefer to have flexibility where they, they can. I mean, you've, you've taken away the flexibility in some cases, but not, not in all. And I just didn't want to know, I, I just wasn't sure whether you wanted to expand that to other, other of the committees.
I just wanted to make sure that we have clarity on that one. I'm assuming that people are happy having that applied to all committees. Are we happy, stating our preference, but giving them a choice?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we've taken care of that one.
Okay.
What if we just decide?
Yes.
Preference to co-chairs, but give a choice.
Right.
Some of the committees are very small.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so they, they say, no, we don't need that. Well, then they don't have a, if there's only two of them there, they don't have a quorum.
Okay. Didn't we constitute, say, Broadways as seven, for instance? It doesn't matter. We can.
Yeah, we, we've got that one settled.
Right.
So I looked at Article 1 of Chapter 2.16, and I was trying to figure out what other areas we might want to add to that. And that would be from other areas behind that, correct? Any, any from the individual articles to Article 1? Did anybody spot any of those that they thought should be a general provision? Going once? Going twice?
Well, what are the, ha. That's something. Open meeting requirements. Open meeting requirements are standard across all committees, it should be handled the same way, and so that's something that could be pulled out of there.
Yes.
Everybody fine with that? Which section is that?
Well, for an example, on your Safe Broadways, on page 5C3, that actually includes report, a yearly report to the council, which might, might be another one to move over in a separate paragraph.
Or page 12, 2.16, 260, is open meeting requirements for the Emergency Preparedness Committee.
Clerk, any problem with moving that section, those sections?
No, it makes sense. And, and if, if there isn't anything else at this time, when I, I'll come back with a draft ordinance, and at that point, if there are other things you want to change, you could do that at that point. Or you could send me, if there are any additional thoughts in the meantime.
But you understand the intent of. We just to get the more generic things all in.
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
Councilmember Schultz.
I'm curious that, you know, in this chapter, 2.16, obviously certain committees are not included in this chapter, like the Neutider Free Committee, the Noise Control Board, which is currently not, it has not, is not functional. Board, which is currently not, it has not, is not functional, the Ethics Commission, and some others, like COLTA and the Board of Elections. There may be historical reasons that they're separate chapters, as opposed to legal reasons. I wouldn't have any clue, but it seems to me that somewhere along the way, that those, whatever we're deciding on these things, for this particular chapter ought to be applicable to those other committees, unless there's obvious reasons why it shouldn't be so.
Right. So perhaps it could, the general provisions could refer to all the groups listed in this chart, in the table, that is.
Sounds like a good idea.
Except that the table doesn't include, doesn't include the, the Environmental Committee. It has the Safe Roadways, Roadways Committee, but it doesn't include.
It does. It does.
It does? Oh, Committee on the Environment. All right, I see it. I was looking under the E's.
Another suggestion, this is fairly minor, I think. Terms of office varies from committee to committee, so they all, for example, say, members shall serve staggered terms, two- or three-year terms. I think they, they may or may not all say in my quick read, all terms shall begin on July 1st and end. That language looks similar. But some do and some do not have the midterm vacancy language. And some, like the Emergency Preparedness Committee, have additional language on the unexpired term. Might just look through that and see if there's any reason to, it doesn't necessarily have to move to the general section, but it could be that there just is a little more standardization in there.
Yes.
And I think the Recreation Committee is sort of lacking altogether in that passage.
And can the clerk just, if there is a reason, tell us why the, the expiration of the terms are broken up into the quarters of the year, but there's, they're kind of loaded into the first and second quarters with just a little bit in the third and nothing in the fourth? Is, is there a particular reason for that?
I think none in the fourth quarter because of the holiday. So if you have terms expiring on December 31st, it's a little awkward. You'd have to be making, in many cases, you'd be making appointments in December, and you might not be likely to do that. They've gotten a little bit out of.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's other ones that aren't on the quarter, like April 30th.
Right, right.
For Recreation and Fasada. I just, I just didn't know, I'm not sure it makes a whole lot of difference. It was to try and spread the load mainly on the clerk's office and the council in not be, not being, looking for everybody at once.
Right. Right.
That's a good reason.
Right. Therefore, is everybody happy, looking for most of the people that we need in the first half of the year and not much in the second? Does it make a difference?
Should be spread around.
No.
What is the clerk thinking?
I think it's fine like it is. I think it doesn't make any difference. That's my perspective.
Maybe if there's a, maybe if there's a new committee.
Right, if there's a new one.
But I don't know if you want to go back and change.
Right.
There are some activities that wink in and out of existence. For instance, the CBG evaluate, CDBG Evaluation Committee. I think they met only once, but, you know, if that kind of stuff comes up, redistricting, council compensation, these things come up at irregular intervals, so, you know.
Okay.
And the truth of the matter is, with vacancies and so on, it's a rolling process in truth.
Your workload is all shot till you know what, anyway.
The fall also has election judges and other, and, you know, opportunities like that.
Okay. So it sounds like everybody's happy with all of those dates.
Can we also create our own version of a selective service requirement and make service on committees mandatory? Could you just put that in?
Just, just for boys.
Or just for girls, maybe, just to be there.
I was, I was gonna say, yes, General Hershey.
Oh, my gosh. Wow.
Blast from the past.
And while you mention that, let me take the opportunity to note that the Ethics Commission, we're at a critical point with the Ethics Commission and really need some additional members. I have one application to send to you, but it's, 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 it's a seven member, and I think there are three now, and I think you'll have an application for a fourth. So, and there will be more work for the Ethics Commission in, in the coming years, so I think it's very important to try to staff that committee, commission.
Do you recall what the ward distribution is in the current and prospective members? No.
One, two, three, one, two, I mean, it's, it's heavily loaded towards one, two, and three.
And I, I wonder if it's worth re-contacting any of the people who have served on it in the past when it didn't have anything to do and said, you know, I've had enough of nothing to do. Because I'm, I'm thinking of one or two in particular who might want to come back.
Or if they learned what it is that they have to do, they might not.
Well, but it might be worth revisiting that just because they've served. When there wasn't much to do, it was like, well, see, I'll move on to something else.
Yeah. If you want, if anybody wants to send me names, I'd be happy to do the recruitment, you know, if you have thoughts, if you want me to contact anyone specifically, I'd be happy to do that.
And Jesse, have we got any more applications in for the, either the environment or the Safe Roadways? We still have sort of three or four?
We're, we're status quo with what we, with what I sent you two weeks ago.
I did, I did send out a notice about the Environment Committee to the Tacoma Business Association, to the Tacoma Business List. I don't have access to business. Actually, I'm supposed to talk to Melanie Isis on Wednesday, so I've mentioned it to her, but I'm surprised, well, I'm not surprised, disappointed you didn't get anything out of that. Also, to Tacoma Park Environment List, and, you know, figuring there might be some organizational types there.
Everybody's busy.
Okay. Do we have anything else to do on general provisions and any other questions like that before we see if there's anything that we need to do about MCKNAC or the Noise Control Board?
And one thing I want to bring up, it's not a general provision, but there's at least one committee that's in existence that is actively doing things that are very good things, but that's outside its mandate, the committee's mandate within Tacoma Park City Code. And I wonder if we'll entertain changes, adjustments to the mandate of any of these committees at the same time as we make these other changes.
Bring it up.
Yeah. I'm, I'm referring in particular to the Recreation Committee, which has advisory duties but no activity duties in city code on page 13. So I think that's a change that the council should consider making to create recognition in city code for activities as opposed to just advice. So maybe I'll make some suggestions there.
If you want to draft, draft some language?
Yes.
And if anybody else finds any other things like that, we can, we can do those as we make the revisions, bring them up, and we'll see what we've got. Okay, so we have to spend a couple of minutes talking about the Montgomery College Neighbors' Advisory Committee. My, my sense is that that was established, oh, ten, somewhere between, like eight or 10 years ago. And it was a, there were people who were named to it once when it started, and then there haven't been any changes to it since. It's technically still in existence. I don't think it's meeting. I think some of the people may have moved. And there are no particular hot-button issues with the college at the moment that I'm aware of, but it would be a good idea if we think this is a, a committee that might need to continue in existence for other issues that come up. It was, it was originally envisioned as kind of a town gown committee that would deal with issues of particular concern for the closest neighbors to the college and recognition that there might be some other, more citywide issues, but it was essentially focused on the neighborhood issues with the college. Does anybody have any different information on that or any sense that we should do something? My sense is that as funding becomes available in the, in the out-years, that there are going to be more projects where the college is wanting to work with neighbors. I wonder whether the, the right venue for that is the Neighborhood Association, or whether the city wants some role in designating some people to follow through on what that might be, whether we, whether we want, whether the wise thing to do is to set it up in advance, anticipating the need, or wait for the need and address that as it comes up. And do we want to then therefore say, okay, that committee has ceased to exist and wherever it's mentioned, we'll, you know, we'll take out that recognition so that it doesn't exist anymore? Any thoughts? Councilmember Grimes.
I have a question. It's not clear to me. The Montgomery College Neighborhoods, Neighbors Advisory Committee was established by resolution in 2005. Would that be subject to the changes that we're making right now to pull together rules for all of the committees, given that this was not put into city code? It would be.
Not necessarily. I guess, I guess you would have to, it's not a statutory committee, so it wouldn't necessarily fall under these rules unless you add that, add that into the code.
So I wonder, is that another change we should make to the code, to say that the rules that we're sticking up in, what was it, section, I'm, I'm sorry, is it the, the Article One, that those general provisions would also apply to non-statutory committees? This is a question.
And what other non-statutory committees?
There is the Washington Adventist Land Use Committee.
And the Police Chief's Advisory Committee. Well, that's not a council committee.
That's not a council committee.
So all of it, non-statutory council. For that matter, the CDBG Evaluation Committee is not a council committee either.
So what, how do we draw this distinction? Where, where is the distinction, the law, between a statutory committee and the wall oak, for example?
The, the committees that are established by resolution are typically not meant to be permanent, ongoing committees. The, the ones that you would put into the city code are ones that you intend to continue on for years and years.
Yeah, I think that, you know, my advice is when it's something that's fairly short-term, that it, it should just kind of stand alone. I, I think that having these various provisions really are for something that you would consider, you know, that you would keep reappointing members to, and it would go on for, for a much longer period of time. I think the non-statutory, you've got a task force in mind to deal with that particular issue over maybe at most two years or something.
Is the best way to proceed with MCKNAC to basically say, gee, this was a short-term committee, it wasn't statutory, therefore it's officially out of existence? And if we need something similar, we'll deal with it when we need it? Basically a ex post facto sunset? That seems to be good with everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there anything, given that it's not a statutory committee, is there anything we need to do statutorily to say it doesn't exist anymore?
It might make sense to draft a resolution dissolving the committee.
Okay. Next, next I'll note, as the representative for Ward One, which includes Montgomery College and North Tacoma, which is written into the resolution establishing the committee, I'll note that no one has asked me in my almost year's tenure on the city council about reactivating this committee.
So it sounds like a resolution recognizing that it doesn't exist anymore. We'll take care of it. Okay. Noise Control Board and the Noise Ordinance. My recollection is, they haven't had a quorum and an ability to meet for some time, and they haven't had cases in some time.
Correct. So, so the question is, do you, the code, by, by code, there should be a Noise Control Board. So, so we either need to rejuvenate it, or you need to revisit the, the Noise Ordinance and determine if you need it or not.
Would people like a chance to review the Noise Control Ordinance? And that will give us our answer on the Noise Control Board. Have people had any inquiries, difficulties, problems? This is something that we should talk about. I don't know whose lights went on first. I'll start down at the end. Councilmember Mail.
I don't know if it's a function that the city can perform in any way, associated with noise levels and evaluation, the police department or someone else, the city staff, but I imagine we would have issues at some point relating to gas-powered leaf blowers or roosters, or other sounds like that.
Children's birthday party with live entertainment that is amplified way above the levels.
Yes.
So I, I do think that, I mean, it's a good sign, right, that we haven't needed it for a while, but I just can't imagine that, that'll last forever. And it's nice to have an outlet for dealing with that when it does arise. I don't know how we manage the rejuvenation or otherwise, you know, keep people in reserve.
Right.
But that's my thought.
Yeah, the police department, of course, does enforce the Noise Ordinance, but, but there are situations where a noise board might possibly be helpful. I think the last time this came up, there was some thought about the council revisiting the Noise Ordinance generally, and it might make sense with the new chief on board to, to have a more general discussion about the Noise Ordinance, see if it's meeting the needs, meeting your needs, and thinking about the Noise Control Board in that context as well.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. When, when we, when some community organization has a party and they get a hold of the city clerk, and you put out some kind of an announcement and ask for feedback, I mean, would that have been the, the Noise Control Board, is that strictly a, a duty of the city clerk?
It's actually a duty of the city manager.
Okay. It was delegated to the city clerk. Okay.
But there's a noise waiver provision, a temporary noise waiver provision in the Noise Ordinance, and those are requests for a temporary waiver of the Noise Ordinance.
Because I, I, I agree with Councilmember Mail. I think there's probably, and I also think maybe it needs to be revisited via the police department and the new police chief, but I think a Noise Ordinance and Noise Control Board may be important to continue. I know in, in this last year, there's been issues on some of the streets about tractors or tractor trailers or machine, machines operating, digging on streets and, you know, before 7:00 or whatever the, whatever the law is. And I think that, that, that this is something that we probably should have and reinvent, if you will. And if they don't have anything to do, that might be a good thing, but they should at least, you know, meet once a quarter, or whatever the rules are.
Councilmember Schultz.
I think it'd be a good idea for us to read, read the, the chapter that has to do with that, because a lot of the noises that are created by public works, street work and, and all that's exempted from the Noise Control Ordinance in any case, as you would imagine, you know, fire engines and ambulances and, and garbage trucks and all that stuff that makes sometimes terrific noise.
Garbage trucks. Garbage trucks are restricted to the hours they can operate.
Yeah.
Okay. In my, I've had a lot of experience with the noise ordinance, as you may know, principally from churches of all places. And it isn't because they're ringing their bells too loud on Sunday that that was what it was, and I won't go into all of that. But this is, I guess you could call it institutionally generated noise of outrageous proportions on multiple occasions in Ward Six. And we've had some, no doubt, we've actually had problems with certain private property owners, either so much as an individual party that went too long and got a little too noisy and created a lot of embarrassment for all the people involved when the police arrived and hurt feelings. To cultural situations where people say, well, this is the way we do it in our country in Africa, and you're sort of saying, well, look, we need to talk. Chief Ricucci was really good about trying to meet people in those situations halfway and trying to mitigate as opposed to throwing the book at people. And it worked. And so I think the idea of maybe having our new chief take the time to look at our ordinance and see what he thinks we could do with it and whether or not he could see a role that would benefit everybody in having a board, a noise control board, would be a good thing to do before we make any decisions.
If I can suggest that, just as a tickler reminder, the clerk might send the council members a link to the noise ordinance and anything about the noise control board, so we don't have to spend any time or precious resources printing things to send, but if it's like, here's the link, go here, review it. Just, you know, it's the reminder. And then send something to the chief and say, we would like some review by him and his department about any potential issues with that, that we're going to revisit it. That way, the police have looked at it, the council has re-looked at it, re-familiarized ourselves with it to the extent that any of us feel that's necessary, and then we can have a focused discussion on the noise control ordinance and the noise control board and see what, if anything, we want to do. Councilmember Grimes?
My recollection is that the Tacoma Park Noise Control Ordinance is largely the same, if not nearly identical, to the Montgomery County Ordinance, that we just localized it for local enforcement and so on. I don't recall that the Montgomery County Ordinance has a noise control board as part of it, but in any case, that means that the chief is likely to be very familiar with it. So I certainly endorse what Councilmember Schultz suggested, and that you picked up that we asked the chief to look at this.
Okay. Anything else on any of the committee procedures? I think we've dispatched those which we needed to talk about tonight. So then we have one remaining item, which is the opportunity to share any information on boards and committees. Seeing no lights, I'll start. I had a couple of things. Just wanted to let folks know that when I attended and spoke at the Institute for Regional Excellence's graduation on Friday evening down at COG, I was familiar with a couple of the graduates. That's the Certified Public Manager Program. That's the joint effort between COG and George Washington University. One of the graduates from Montgomery County Government was Steve Lamphier, who was the original, I'll say, what, project manager, herder of cats on the whole effort to find a new location for the Tacoma Park Fire Station, which ended up, which started with looking at a spot behind what's now Washington Adventist University off of Greenwood. And temporary, it was like, where to put the temporary, how to do that whole project, he was with it for a number of years, and he remarked to me at the graduation that the program had been valuable in helping to look at issues regionally, but that he had cut his teeth on that project and that it was the most regional partner project that he had ever worked on, and it gave him pause at first, but he greatly enjoyed it. And it was good to see him again, and he's still involved with work at the county on issues that are important to us, so it was good to see him. I've also been continuing to participate in the search committee for the COG Executive Director. The timeline on that has slipped a bit, that's still an ongoing process, and there should be an announcement of an executive director at the November board meeting. The Fire Department, there are ongoing discussions about the ladder truck and the engine and getting that in service. I'll let Councilmember Daniels Cohen say some things about that. And I talked about the, a little bit about the meeting that former city manager Matthews and I had with County Council staff about the GO Committee, and I will get some more information out to you on that once I get a chance to write that memo. Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. As I've said every time, the very special part about being a council member is you get invited to do everything. So it's been a fun actual month. I, and a lot of it you hear when I give gold stars, but the Cub Scouts getting together, you know, doing their day of peace candle lighting. I have been to a Maryland Municipal League Convention Planning Meeting, and I, of course, am on the social committee. So we're going to be very, very social. This year, there's going, this next year in 2013, there will be a miniature golf tournament, not just a regular golf tournament, but a miniature golf tournament. I had the pleasure and exciting morning spent with five classes of third graders and working out with them about a community project, and each of the third graders is to produce a PowerPoint presentation on a computer about their project. And I was like, they were aghast at my age, and I was aghast at third graders doing a PowerPoint. That was what was the most fun. The first thing I said to all of them was, I'm 70 years old, and they all went, oh! So that was pretty special. I've been to several Tacoma Foundation fundraisers as a participant and a volunteer. I had the wonderful opportunity to be a participant and a volunteer in the Ward Four Explore Tacoma event, which was really very special. I was able to go to the Wacko Citizens Association meeting and left with, I was not bloodied when I left. It was, they all were very involved in the upcoming discussion about residency and advise and consent.
You have a Ward Three tour coming up, don't you?
Well, which is, yes, I did that too. We've already, we've already set the Ward Three, or we've come close to setting the Ward Three Explore Tacoma, and Ward Three is not nearly as easy to do as Ward Four. It's also much hillier. So we did that just this past weekend. I did go to the Firehouse Board of Directors meeting last Wednesday night, and the ladder truck number 702, which is the big hook and ladder that was supposed to come back to the city, it resides in, I'm going to call it a Silver Spring Fire Department, but it's the one adjacent to the new Blair High School. And there's no guarantee that we're going to get it back. I had made some suggestions about methods to use, but I'm not sure we can use those methods. But we're going to try and get it back here.
Was hijack one of those?
Well, hijacking was one of the things, but the other, the other one was having some members of our community go and speak to Montgomery County Fire Chief Bowers, and it would be the senior adults who want that truck back in the city for their safety. And I also need to talk to city manager Ludlow about somehow partnering up with them to see if we can have some meetings there. And it's all about liability, insurance and liability. That magic liability gets in the way a lot, and it's very important. Let's see. So I was a participant and a volunteer at the Beer Fest. You know, you all heard about that, that was great. And like I just said, I worked with Tacoma United on the design of the Ward Three Explore Tacoma. It should be pretty interesting, and we're going to use as many of our resources that we have in Ward Three, of which there are many. And I think that might do it. I don't think I left anything out. Thank you. It was a fun four weeks. Never a dull moment.
Councilmember Schultz.
I attended the council of government's quarterly meeting of the Climate, Energy, Environmental Policy Committee, affectionately known as the CEEPC. I had to look it up.
Or SEPC.
SEPC. I had to look it up on my smartphone here, because I can't, never remember what the CEEPC stands for. And it was a fascinating meeting, got a lot out of it, took a lot of notes, brought home a ton of paper to report, and I left it all at home tonight, and I'm not going to waste anybody's time here tonight trying to reminisce about a meeting that took place three weeks ago. So I will report on it in my public comments next week if I can get my brain and memory to work on it, so I apologize for that.
Anybody else? Councilmember Smith.
Recently, there was an email that came out that said that Catholic Charities wasn't going to be active this December, so I reached out to the chief of staff of Garge Diocese for Washington DC, Joan Fowler-Brown, and she said that Catholic Charities will be involved in Tacoma Park this December.
Anything else?
Where is the MML meeting?
Rockville, County Council Building, fifth floor conference room.
Thank you.
6:15 dinner, 6:30 meeting.
Thank you.
Is there a cost?
No.
For dinner?
No.
But you have to run all the way.
Yeah, we'll drive behind you to make sure nobody hits you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
We'll return.